We're gonna call the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six public budget hearing to order. Okay, the Board of Education approved a tentative budget on Wednesday, July ninth, two thousand twenty-five. A legal notice was published in the Cole City Current Newspaper on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. The tentative budget had been on display for public inspection, and as of this writing, nobody has requested to review or copy the proposed budget documents. If any guests would like to make a comment on the tentative two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget, this will be the appropriate time to do so. Any, any, any comments? All right then, hearing none, I will consider the public hearing of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget adjourned. And at six oh one, we're gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Roll call, please, London. Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here, you can relax, it's okay. Brother, brother, not in trouble, you're here, like I said, it's always glad to see you smile. Okay, Mr. Spencer, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so, um, tonight, very fortunate that we were able to grant, to welcome all of our new certified staff members. And, uh, put them on spot a little bit and have our principals here to introduce them. And, uh, welcome them and have them a chance to introduce themselves a little bit, so I, without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Davidson to start.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Davidson, principal at Earl Travis Center. And also the assistant director of Special Operations, Miss Sherpa. I'm fortunate to have new teachers that are brand new, first year, and, um, who went in their class to me, who've never heard of that phenomenon. And I don't say that lately, um, so I'll start introducing them, let them talk about themselves also, so my first fan is from Cole City, Bradjoat, Hannah J. Free. Um, Hannah, if you wanna stand up, Hannah went to Bradley University, um, she's one of Miami's improved school teachers, um. And that's when I learned to play, and, um, it's one of my favorite things to do, actually, and, uh, you would, I mean, I'd never know, you know. Um, the other day, said, hey, I have this, um, I have this issue with a kid, I don't quite know, so, you know, I think I'm just gonna call mom and talk about it, and I was like. Okay, yes, you should, it was like a first year teacher not afraid to do that at all, so go ahead, if you wanna introduce yourself.
Yeah, so just, uh, she mentioned that I went to Bradley University, so I did my pre-student teaching in Peoria. Um, so I did a preschool program there, it was a Head Start program, it was in the Lowlyton District, so it was really amazing to see how different situations can be between different school districts. Um, and then I jumped a little bit upgrades and I did student teaching in first grade in Washington, Illinois, so it was about twenty minutes away from Peoria. Um, it really reminded me of Cole City, actually, the community was really nice to be engaged with, it was a smaller knit, kinda tight-knit community, everybody knew each other, so it was kind of nice to set my foot into that a little bit, and then just being back into this community too. Uh, I'm just excited for my first year to see all the highs and lows, I know there's gonna be a lot, beef could always grow from both ends of that, so I'm just excited to see both of those.
Big difference between Peoria and Washington.
Which difference, twenty minutes, big difference between those. Um, my other new teacher sitting next to Brienne Clavenna, um, Brienne went to Illinois State, um, she is not, she's also. She is not new to the E C C, actually, she does soon teaching rest, spring with Tiffany Stewart in first grade, um, and then she jumped over and so the, she's one of our new kindergarten teachers, um. So she's, I've been in her classroom as well, leading to bringing stories to her kiddos, um, they love to ask questions. And, um, they're one of the most well-veached classes I've seen them hauling, which has a big deal at the beginning of kindergarten, so, and if you wanna.
Yeah, I graduated in December, so I took the time between December and August, um. I thought I actually filled the kindergarten paternally for the last month of school for Lauren's screen over, and she had a twin. Um, so it's really nice to see like the end of kindergarten, but it's certainly a big jump to go back to the beginning, um, but I guess hope that, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel and. Um, yeah, I'm excited for my first, you know, like the first field trip, the first parent teacher conference, the first, you know, class party, always a little first, a little, little class, so I'm excited.
And my last minute teacher off the floor graduate, Kate Mueller, went to the University of Wisconsin, um, and he is our P E teacher. Um, Kate is a rock star in the gym, Kate is like a local celebrity in our building, all the kids love us from Mueller, um. You know, he's like the party in the gym, and you kinda have to be when you're trying to entertain, um, forty-five girls. Um, Kate has jumped right in, super confident, you know, with parents, I'm back to school night, but today we had like a little hiccup when he had a butt evacuation drills. Um, several that wasn't able to, and he just came out and was like, can we do this? I'm like, no, you can't do it yet, and he's like, all right, and just went back to the gym and changed plans on the fly, so, um, he's a great fit at the E C C.
Um, couple things looking forward to this year, really just looking forward to get to know all the staff members, uh, everybody, some of them have been my teachers, believe it or not. They might not have been at D C C, or I might have known them from somewhere else, um, looking forward to really just getting to know all my students as well. Having the same impact like Mr. Bowen had on me when I was in middle school, that's how I really, really would like to have an impact on all my students. And really just looking forward to all my firsts as well, is like, you know, as what I said, breaking more, having fun, trying to do my best, and hopefully have the same effect like my teacher said, I mean, when I was here in the whole city district.
All right, thank you, thanks, I return over to Mrs. Trapp.
Now, a second, ladies, good evening, thank you all for having us, I almost got out of this, but hopefully, I had a very last minute addition, um. About a week ago now, Harmon Kinder joined us as our reading interventionist, and we're very glad to have her on board. Uh, she's probably very stressed because I've done a lot at her the last week, she's done a lot of training, a lot of meeting with the staff, um, but she's fit right in, so I hope she's open.
Hello, uh, most of you probably already know of me from my family, Melody graduated just last year, she was very involved in theater and the music program. And then I have been a teacher at the high school, so, um, this community is very dear to our hearts, the school community. I graduated in two thousand five, so I'm much older than, um, than the, um, teachers, but I worked down south a lot in the school districts, but then I stepped away. While we, we had a family, and so when Melody graduated, I wanted to somehow come back into this school system, but so this was a great opportunity that arose, and I'm very excited for it.
Thank you.
You're good, thank you, Stratter, Mrs. Carlson, I'm glad that you go.
Hi, so only two of my five new staff members are here tonight, but the other three are gonna come next month if there's room for them on the agenda, they had prior engagements for this Wednesday night. Um, so my two new staff members tonight are actually both fifth grade teachers. Both went to Joliet West High School, which was very interesting, I'll first like to introduce, um, Adeline Fiss, and she graduated from high, you know. Hope you wanna talk about yourself?
Yeah, so I graduated, uh, from Joliet West twenty twenty, that was fine, and then I gave a little bit of time at J J C, and then transferred over to I S U. I also have high endorsement in English and the second language, so that's something I'm hoping to dab the pepper into one day, but. Yeah, I'm having a great time so far, I love the kids, I love the staff that I'm working with, the fifth grade team's amazing, and I'm just very excited to grow and see how much better I am at the start of next year.
Um, and then we have Sophia Rankin, so she, Joliet West, like I said, graduated off of Indiana, I think.
Yes.
Not related to former middle school math teacher, Mr. Rankin, and I only knew him as Mister, so I forget his first name, Mr. Miller, you might remember, but, um. But she does have an educational line down there, so I'll let you talk about that connection and how it's going so far.
Hey, Mr. Rankin, long last time, I remember, my mother, uh, teaches high school at Great Custer, so I should actually go ahead. Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, and maybe I think you're a student as well, yeah, I don't know, that's my kid, yeah. Um, yeah, but I'm from Joliet, and I did, like, I've seen teaching over in Rock Island, so I really enjoyed staying in the small town, absolutely, hearing about it from my mom. Right, well, you know, but, you know, the whole city has been really great, everyone has been so incredibly kind and supportive. And making me feel that I'm not just like a number in your building, like I'm a person, I'm a teacher, um, it's been great, yeah, and even the students too are wonderful, I mean, the best kids I've ever worked with truly. They're so kind, I've loved getting to know them so much, and I can't believe it's only been like two or three weeks, and I'm like, I get to know you more for like eight or more months, I mean, something, I'm excited. So, yeah, yeah, I'm really excited for everything to come, this is your future.
Both ladies have been working hard with their, um, mentors, and I appreciate that, and this is their first job as educators, and you would not, you would not guess that. I've had other people come in and say, wow, big gem, tell you one day, we're like, how are they brand new, they are just doing so, so well. And then both of them agreed to try, um, our school psychologist, um, Sarah Veranda was looking into an additional, um, possible future math intervention, and these two both jumped on board right away, and they're like, sign me up, I'll try it, so just go-getters, and I'm so glad to have them as a part of the C C I S staff. Thank you, I'll be back next time.
By the way, Trishy, I think that was Jim Rankin.
Jim sounds right. No, Mark was Mr. They both from wrestling.
So I've got, um, three new staff members, um, I'm just gonna give a plug about each one of them, so my first one is Matthew Felbine, um, he is our middle school, high school chorus teacher. Um, in addition, she, he teaches sixth grade music, um, so he gets the, the joy of teaching ukuleles to twelve-year-olds, um, so it's, it's incredibly fun, I'm sure, um, just one plug for him. Uh, he has been extremely positive, I told him, um, in about the second week of July, hey, you don't have a classroom, you have to go teach chorus in the gym because of some, um, special ed things coming to our building and, and not having space, he was extremely positive about it, said, what can I do to help you, um, which was awesome from first-year teacher, and, and just appreciated his flexibility. Matthew, if you wanna introduce yourself.
Everyone, uh, I'm at the life, I am so excited to be here, um, so grateful for all of us to work with, and I think, obviously, things are a little different this year, but just the way that all of the staff, the students have been awesome, I mean, first day, seventh day, great choir, we're setting up the gym. Second day, I walk in and the seventh day, the teachers have already set up the entire gym with the views on it, and, you know, and it's just amazing, they're awesome kids, you know, this, they're the best, uh. And so I think for this year, I'm just super excited for you all to get to hear them eventually, if you wanna become, so, they're, they're so talented, they have so much energy. And it's just a pleasure to get to work with them at both the middle school and the high school every day, so thank you for all that you guys do.
My second, um, new hire this year is Mr. McPeters, um, Nick is a Cole City alumni, uh, Nick uh, took on a special education self-contained program at the middle school, that is, uh, is a new program to the middle school, um, transition here due to some E S I S, and the students just kind of phased to the middle school. Um, Nick has been doing a great job, Nick gets to school about five-thirty every morning, um, I always say, somebody asked me how, actually, this trip, I was asking how he was doing today. Um, he always has a smile on his face at eight-thirty A M, he looks like he has been in a tornado and a whirlwind by three to one, he comes back every day, and he's super positive, and, and Nick's been doing an incredible job, so.
Hello, uh, my name is McPeters, um, as Mr. Stone alluded to, I'm not here, and I've actually worked in the district for the past three years, um, as a classroom aide. Um, so one thing that's been super exciting is getting to work with a lot of faculty that I've worked with in new capacity, and now I'm getting to work with another, uh, getting our students out as much as possible into other uh, gym types of settings, it's been really great, um, one positive thing about my room is, there's only six of them, and then you wanna give them time, so I've gotten to know them very well. Did you get to know them, I'm super excited for, uh, the games that I think that we can make, um, some things that might not always be as easy to see on test scores. Um, but it's positive, uh, things that they're able to improve upon every day, um, that for some is, uh, truly easy, and for some, not so much, uh, so that's what we're working on constantly along with all of that.
And all I can say is, if you've been that size, then I was injured, but often see, well, instead of, you know, you're like.
And last but certainly not least for our middle school, uh, new hires is Mrs. Karen Coca, um, she comes to us from a military background and sat seven years, seven? At Mantino, um, so seven years teaching eighth grade science at Mantino, um, lives in Custer Park, I'm not gonna steal any more of her thunder, but she dropped in her interview that, um, and she's sick of me saying this, but I think it's the coolest thing ever. Um, she's like, yeah, you know when those Blackhawk helicopters landed, I was the pilot, I landed the helicopter here, so, um, just to, um, again, she's probably sick of me saying it, but I'm like, so you need to drive the helicopter to school, like. Um, Karen, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, um, it's been really great getting to know all the students that's out here, the, um, staff's been incredibly helpful and welcoming. Um, I came from eighth grade science, so teaching, uh, some sixth graders this year, so I was a little bit nervous about that, but they have been amazing, I love the sixth graders, actually, so I love that, um. So, I just, been really great to be here, I love it, so, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, and last, last one, at least, Mr. Stafford. All right, the high school, uh, we also have three, uh, new staff members, uh, Matthew Felbine, who you don't have to stand up in, in time, you know. All, sure, he's got amazing things to say about the high school as well, um, he is with us first period before he goes over to middle school, he's also our course, uh, director. Um, he's have already come in and talked about how much they love, uh, the classroom, so must be doing something right off to a, to a good start. Uh, so we do have Matthew, um, shared with the middle school, uh, Peyton Hutchings, um, is here with us as first-year teacher, also Cole City graduate, U of I grad. Um, teaches weights in P E, um, also gonna start to do some coaching for us this winter, um, and then again in the spring, so Peyton, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Um, Peyton Hutchings, uh, like I said, I went to the University of Illinois, so, uh, five years ago, I moved out of community for college and in this short five years now, I am like beyond excited to be back in this community, I don't think there's any place that's better. Uh, so far this year, it's been nothing short of amazing, uh, I've had a great time connecting with, uh, all my students and, uh, I'm hoping that I'll leave an impact on them, cause as, uh, Kate Mueller mentioned, a lot of teachers here have left a positive impact on me, so I kinda hope to step into their shoes. Uh, and leave the impacts of, leave positive impacts on the students in this community and the next generation of players, so. I guess I'm beyond, beyond excited for this opportunity, and I can't wait to keep working, so, thank you.
I will say too, because a couple people have referenced it, in about twenty years, you'll be at Walmart and flip flops and shorts, and some person with a stroller is gonna walk up and be like, hey, Mr. Hutchings. Then you'd be like, oh my God, how did that, how did that fly by, like that. Uh, last but not least, Olivia Bruce, uh, Olivia is with us with some past teaching experience and professional experience. Um, she is going to be a key part of kind of that new digital realm that we're trying to expand on within the Fine Arts Department. Um, and her background fits that, uh, perfectly, so it'll be a few, please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Brenda, um, yeah, so I was a graphic designer for ten years before I came over into the teaching world, so I worked for companies like Tootsie Roll and Starbucks and some adult beverage companies that I still know our names for. Um, and there are quite a few layovers between teaching and design, which I really enjoy, kind of plugging in, uh, I've had really great connections with a lot of students who are interested in pursuing the arts. Um, and even though there are many, many students that will never become an artist, that doesn't mean they can't be an artist for an hour in my class, so. I always strive to make art the most thrilling part of their day, um, and it's also a time for you to not think about algebra, not think about that essay that you have to write, it's a time for you to sort of perform, see these different parts of the brain, um, and to explore different aspects, and it's very exciting to start with a whole new digital program, working with Mark Fiss is fantastic, you know him, he is fantastically eccentric, and so am I, so it's gonna be a fun duo of artists and our next generation of artists to go, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Welcome to a couple of times, one more time, doesn't hurt, one more time, we're so glad to have three, three group of young folks, and you could, you know, the sky's the limit, as far as I'm concerned, you're gonna do a good job, I know you are. And so just welcome again, and we're here to help you, so let us know what's going on, okay?
And just real quick, I've been into, I've had the opportunity to go into a few of their classrooms, not all of them yet, I've been in a few of them, and, uh, you've heard the principals talk about them, uh, but they are, they've done an amazing job already. Um, you know, when you go in and you see the kids interacting already with the, with the teachers and, and a classroom is taking control already, and it's only been three or four, five days. and a classroom is taking control already and it's only been three or four, five days. We did today was day fifteen or sixteen, I think. So um just they, they've done a great job. Very excited about these new, new hires that we have. Although, you know, we have some, but some experiences, some that are right out of college and they, I think uh Tracy said you would know that some of these kids are right out of, right out of college. So welcome. Exactly. We're very fortunate to have. So welcome, everybody. Keep up the good work. And like Mr. Miller said, if you ever need anything, we're right here to help you.
Let us know. It was a long time ago, but I remember sitting there. Hopefully, the good news is you can go if you want to. The bad news is we have to stay. So.
Thanks, everybody.
Hearing none. Are there any items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing these, so I'll entertain a first and second motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes from the regular meeting of the August sixth, July activity fund reports, July treasures report, the August monthly annual checks report, August payrolls, September accounts payable, personnel items, including approval of resignations, employments, employee transfers, leave requests, retirement requests, extracurricular resignations, extracurricular, oh, we got that twice, extracurricular assignments, advertising donations and to approve the following building usage analysis. Cindy still moves and Mindy seconds. Roll call, please, Lwanda.
Cindy, yes, Cindy Ray, Danny Har, Matt Melvin, Brian Van Dy, Ken Mel.
Yes. Okay, but they all left, so we can't question. Any questions about the three different boards? Any questions about any of those? We still got Dan, we can still question. Anything? Well, very good then. Okay, Luke.
Uh, nothing to add, but happy to answer any questions. I think we're up to our website.
Look, I had a, I had a question. How many can we put in Kohler Academy?
Um, I don't know if we have a set number to be honest with you. Um, you know, it's, we have a really, we have a big room now. Uh, so space wouldn't be the issue. I think we would have to kind of sit down and talk about at what point we're kind of spinning our wheels with the staff we have. Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think we could do a typical classroom type setting. So twenty five, thirty. If we had to.
Sure, if we had to, hopefully, hopefully we won't, but it's good to know that that's available.
And the one thing I can just about that, the Lord Academy is remember sometimes we have, we may have fourteen kids in there, but they may not all be at the same time. So I'm gone. Go, yeah.
And then board members, do you understand what that's all about? Everybody okay with that? Because I know with the good people, you might not. I mean, what a great opportunity. What a great opportunity for those kids, at least being a second chance. But you guys were going there, that wasn't available. You know, you sent them over to someplace else. So thank you for that. Appreciate that, Luke. Okay, any questions to Jim or Jen, anything you want to add? Okay, Mr. Spencer.
All right. I do have a couple of things. Um, just uh that's on there. Homecoming parade is Friday, September twenty sixth. Um, kind of feels weird to be talking about that already, but it is only a couple of weeks away, three weeks away. Um, the parade will start at two thirty. Uh, we will use the same route we've used the last couple of years, which starts on Spring Road and goes, goes north on, on Broadway. Um, if you're interested in being part of that, we will have vehicles for our board members. Just let us know, either let me know or want to know. Um, sometime here next week or so, so we can then make sure we have plenty of vehicles for everybody. But everybody is welcome to attend and participate in that parade if you like. You'd rather be on the sidelines and catch candy, you're welcome to do that too. But just let us know if you would, that way we can get a, you know, vehicle, your vehicles.
Good weather last year, I think.
Yes.
One year, it was a little, little breezy last year, but it was better.
Um, next thing I have is the I A S B Three Rivers Divisional Meeting is Thursday, October twenty third. Um, usually the first one they always have at the Prairie Club Golf Golf Club at five thirty. Um, if you're interested in attending, please let myself or want to know about that. Uh, I know Mr. Miller and I already signed up to go, but if anyone's interested. Um, they do have a dinner, they have a little presentation and it's all put on by school board members. Um, the president of this school board member, the vice president, they're all school board members and they usually have a little show or a little presentation there. Uh, so if you're interested or if you have more questions, feel free to call me. Um, or stop me, I mean, talk about that, but you were definitely invited for that and we'll get you signed up to camp if you're interested. All right. Um, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, um. The joint annual conference, Friday focus workshops, um, I know one has sent that out a couple of times. Um, so these are some really, they'd be very helpful and help to learn kind of the, the role of the board, how to handle different situations of board member. Um, if you're interested, please let Lwanda or I know, um, she can get you signed up quickly. Um, but again, very helpful. Um, and the sooner the better because those do fill up. But uh, that, those are always on Friday mornings.
Uh, Friday morning and or afternoon, the thing about is that once they're full, they're full. So I would need to know sooner rather than later if you're interested, because there's an additional fee to protect them, but helpful information.
Yes, good, good stuff. Good opportunity to learn, learn at the, the board level. So that is all I have as far as uh information for me. If I had to answer any questions.
Any question? Okay, Dan, G A D C.
I have nothing else to add, but what's there?
I talked to Chris about a couple of things. I'm surprised that we got no bids on the project.
Yeah, that's yeah, that's kind of weird, but I think we, we might get something soon. We're, we're talking about maybe adjusting it a little bit, uh trying to stir up some, uh action on it.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. And then I love twenty and twenty one. Yeah, hire somebody in the first, then I say they resigned. That was a quick turn around.
That was one one.
Any, any questions about the G A D C report? Any questions about the athletic curriculum for?
I could just comment on that. So um, as I tallied up the numbers that, that uh Mr. Breeze has been in there, there are almost three hundred and twenty students out for at least a fall sport or activity, band, dance, cheer, football, volleyball, golf, uh tennis, you name it, any of those things. So, you know, over a third of our students, or I'm sorry, almost half of our students are almost half are involved in something, I think it's a great number. Um, anytime we get our kids involved in things, it helps the school year go well. So I think that's really said a lot about the opportunities we have and, and the group of kids that we have that are involved in that much stuff, or have our kid involved in some type of thing. I just thought, I need to work, oh, that's.
That's a little bit concerned about soccer, football, but that's. If you have a good fall, it's amazing how the rest of the year kind of blends in together. And it's just, it just happens. That's all there is to it. And so it's important to get, yeah, that number of kids participating is brilliant. It's outstanding. Any questions about that? Okay, any communication from the floor regarding agenda items or anything in general? And hearing then, let's, now let's move on to old business. I will entertain a first and second motion. Well, we've got to read the resolution first. Whereas the Board of Education, Cole City Community Unit District Number One, County of Grundy, will state of Illinois cause to be prepared to tentative form a budget and the Secretary of this Board has made this conveniently available to public inspection for at least thirty days prior to final action thereof. And whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the third day of September two thousand twenty five, notice a said hearing was given at least thirty days prior to, as, as required by law and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Yeah. Now therefore made it resolved by the Board of Education, as you just follow, section one. Fiscal year of this school district be of the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning of July first two thousand twenty five and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. Section two, the following budget contains an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures for each be and the same is hereby adopted as a budget of this school district for said fiscal year. So with that all said, I'll entertain a first and second motion to approve the resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six operating budget. Quincy moves and Dan second. Anything you want to mention about?
I agree. He's got a little presentation.
So um, as the board remembers, when we talked at the tentative budget, we looked at what we projecting revenues and expenses for. Uh, so a lot of this is just a reminder of the, um, the kind of position that we're in. Um, and just, uh, you know, for everybody's edification, a profile of what our, this um look like, obviously, we're projecting a little bit more than forty million dollars in uh revenues. We recall that seventeen point three million comes from our agreement with Constellation, which is directly related to the Dresden Station. Um, the all, all the other E A V then and tax parcel generate about fifteen point one million dollars. Um, and so the breakdown here is the same rules, same breakdown that we saw at, at ten budget. Um, this is all stems from our tax rate, few dollars and thirty seven cents up here at the most recent um levy. When we look at revenues by fund, um notice the number in the middle of the slide is at forty million dollars, but the number at the bottom of the table there to the left is forty seven million. That includes the seven million dollar transfer that we talked about a tentative, right? When we get to this point of the budget process and we put it into the state budget form, that transfer looks like revenue even though it's not. Right? So for practical sake, we're receiving about forty million dollars. We already have the seven million dollars. It's simply moving from place to place. The same issue on the expense side, that transfer of seven million dollars looks like an expense, even though it's really not, we're just moving it. Um, and so for practical purposes, it's a fifty one million dollar budget uh with about twenty million dollars in salaries, seven or so, or just under seven benefits. And then obviously purchase services, supplies, capital, uh projects as well. Um, we look at the expenditures by fund again, from a state budget form kind of side, that's at fifty eight million, but that includes the seven million dollar transfer. And so it's really a fifty one million dollar um expense. Remember, capital projects is driving most of this um difference between revenues and expenses. Um, the area school project being the largest piece of that, but we do have other secondary projects that are happening this summer, middle school roof, some high school mechanical uh, uh projects. We're hoping to pull off a high school performing arts center. We had a meeting about that today. It's included in the budget right now at three hundred and fifty thousand. We'll have to go out to bid for it. If it comes in at a higher favorite value than that, we probably won't do it. Just be real honest, but it's budgeted and accounted for um in that manner. The facts and assumptions slide really hasn't changed. This is just what we always think about that budget time, right? Our revenue tends to be stable over time. Our expenditures are growing based on a model and our bargaining agreements. Uh, our E A V is growing slightly, um and our tax rate is by design set to be about three dollars and forty cents, which has a lot to do with the agreement that we currently have with Constellation. Just a reminder that our Constellation agreement ends with levy twenty twenty six, which will fund fiscal year twenty eight. And so after that, we'll be negotiating, um, hopefully successfully with Constellation to have a new uh deal. As you know, the Dresden has applied for relicensing. Uh, we anticipate, I think we've got preliminary approval as well. Um, and so we're, we're hopeful that that is good, uh, good karma for us moving, uh, moving forward. Um, this is a hard, you know, you see this table full of numbers. It's very overwhelming. The handout that I left on your table. Um, as you know, Mr. Stone is doing some intern shipping with me and so he built your handouts tonight. They give you just kind of this full picture reflection of the spreadsheet. I want to point out just a couple of things. Um, because you'll hear about an audit here in a few minutes, what is related to um on behalf payments and the student activity funds. When we plan and budget, we are looking at the main operating funds for the district. Um, on the state budget form, they ask us to put in a number for on behalf payments. This is money that never hits my bank. It never comes in as a revenue. It never goes out as an expense. But on the state budget form, it looks as if it does. These are funds that the state pays on our behalf for pension costs related to T R S. And so we put those numbers, so they technically are included or added to what we have budgeted for in funds ten. Student activity funds also is not, it's a different kind of thing. There's a line item in the budget that says, well, what was your beginning balance of activity funds? What do you expect as revenues in all one chunk and expenses in all one chunk? And we believe, I believe that activity funds should be a money in, money out kind of business. We're not there to make a profit on it. And so although it's included on the state budget form in that fund ten total, we really don't budget for it. It, it actually lives in a different software database. Um, just to sidebar for a moment, we are changing our, our software platforms. And so by next year at this time, those activity funds will be included in the software package. And so we'll be budgeting differently for that. Um, not as a result of the comment that's in the audit that uh the Kate will talk about here in a few minutes, but it will make moving forward easier for the business office to have a, a better sense of those expenses and revenues that are coming through student activity fund. Right? So the numbers, the forty one, the forty million or so in revenue and the forty and the fifty one million or so in expenses don't include the on behalf payments because they're not real revenues and expenses that we get, that we receive and, and distribute. Um, and they don't include the student activity funds, which again happen in a different sort of manner, but um, they are numbers that are real and you'll see the comments about them in the, in the audit where we talk about, uh, when we talk about that here shortly. Um, this slide simply represents what the state budget form looks like. Um, earlier in the week, I posted on the website this presentation as well as the state budget form. Um, uh, obviously the tentative budget has been out there um since we talked about it um in June. The real big question tonight, or the really, the point I think we want to make is about the deltas. How has final budget changed from tentative budget? Um, on the revenue side, um, we're showing an increase in the revenue budget from tentative to final that's related to the corporate personal property tax um revenues. Um, the state finalized what they believe the estimate would be for this year and that happened between those two points. So we adjusted the budget accordingly. And that shows a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in um, in those revenues. On the expenditure side, as I spoke about a tentative budget in, on the end fund particularly, we're adjusting benefits and salary adjustments along the way. We're also taking on concession stand uh revenues and expenses this time. Um, and then obviously seeing the capital, some of the capital project tweaks that uh we finalized during the time between tentative and final. Um, in fund twenty, which is for operations and maintenance, we were able to include a boiler project um in that. That was an increase in dollars as well. As we reconciled, closed the year on our transportation contracts, um, I felt it was probably prudent for us to provide a little bit more contingent with respect to the scheduling routes and what we're paying the, our monitor costs for those uh personnel wise, so that's an increase. There's also a finding in the audit related to our I R F social security uh fund. And so I increased those to just to get provide more contingent, so we don't live in a position where we're where we spend more than appropriations uh moving forward. So the big news, the headline here is that a tentative budget, we believe the intermediate school project is going to be at about seven million dollars. We um settle on the guaranteed maximum price during that interim at five billion dollars. And so that's a reduction of two million dollars from where it was a tentative. And so overall uh we see an increase in revenues of seven hundred thousand and a decrease in expenses of just over a million dollars. Um. So that said, I was sitting and entertained uh and questions that the board has about um budget, what happens next if it's approved tonight is I will file it with the counties, Will, Grundy respectively, and the General Office of Education and the FISI. So, questions?
We're in the second year of the.
We are just ending the first year of our transportation. We're right now in the middle of year two. Yeah, or at the beginning of year two. Yep. Questions?
I have a couple of questions. Yep. Um, the education fund walking out of this four, four point four million dollar budget loss.
Mm-hmm.
Is that one time, is it, I mean, that's obviously on a sustainable number with the cash balance. So, and, and just looking at the general fund in general, it's down just about twelve million dollars on the twenty six budget between that fund, the one on fund and the working cash fund. And obviously the working cash fund was planned that way with the bond issuance to be transferred into capital project funds, to fund mostly to their biggest school at this point, but um, I guess I'm wondering, you know, twelve million dollars down, that puts the cash reserve and then head fund specifically about a four month reserve and total general fund, I think would be about a five point seven five uh month reserve based on the total expenses. So a little bit, a little with the, obviously it's historically recommended. And I know there's probably some contingency built in that you hope to come in under.
Right.
You know, obviously that model is not sustainable moving forward, that kind of loss walking out of fiscal year. So just what, what that looks like going forward, I guess.
So it is something certainly that going forward, we need to have conversations. So it is something certainly that going forward, we need to have conversations about, um, particularly with, um. Particularly with some of the lines at, such as purchase services, um, and supplies, and then obviously, obviously some of the capital expenses. One of the reasons that we've been aggressive in this, um. We've been aggressively with capital expenses is because the, the tax agreement that we have with Dresden Station, we're trying to. Capitalize on the fact that they're paying half the bill, essentially, um, and so certainly there are adjustments that can be made. Um, there are also some rostering issues, right, with our, uh, with our staff. The good news is that we have several retirements that are happening in the next. Uh, a good number of retirements are happening in the next several years, which are going to bring the salary position down. Um, and so, yeah, more conversation needs to happen there. Um.
Yeah, I, I guess the ed fund would be the most concerning of the four, four lines, there's not a lot, there's really not much capital at all. Generally comes out of that fund, correct?
So, not necessarily, this year we're doing, because of E rate, we're doing a large switch project. Um, obviously their, their capital, capital expenses, five hundred object expenses that happen out of ed fund.
Um.
Um, but yeah, we absolutely need to start taking a look at, uh, starting to take a look at some of those during our budgeting process. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I guess only our thing, you know, this is first time I've seen through our budget process to school, you know, just, it's just different, I guess. Monday was the first time that we saw a full draft of the complete budget. And we're approving it tonight on Wednesday, I know we had the tentative summaries, but as far as seeing a full budget form and a chance to review. Analyticals from this year to next, it's just, it doesn't give us a ton of process wise to really go through, and I know you did offer to meet, so. Kudos to you for that, I'm not, I'm not questioning the numbers much, it's just, you know, when we're going through the process of proving new positions and. Like last month, I asked, you know, if that new position that was at, um, was written in the budget. And the answer was yes, but there's a four point four million dollar deficit in the, uh, ed fund next year. So that kind of makes me question how it was written in the budget, I guess, and just not having that process upfront, you know, I, I guess. No, this is what I do, also, so at the accounting level. Started, you know, presenting budgets back in June, and we don't approve ours until November, finance committee gets continual updates, so it's just. It's just different, so it's, you know, making the positional additions, deletions, you know, decisions that have come the last couple of months, it's hard to. Get a good detailed, um, review without having more budgetary data like I have in, in front of us ahead of time, so I guess that's just something for. Next year, you know, again, this is my first year in, but it's still the first time seeing it, and probably how it's worked for years, just.
Sure.
You know, I, I come from that background, so it's just a little bit different from this.
Sure, and I think that we can, Mr. Shown, I talked about engaging the finance committee in it, in a different way, because this is a new board makeup.
Hmm.
And so, yeah, I, I certainly think that there are things that we can do to, to give everybody the kind of visibility that, that. That they would want to have, um, I think we can make those changes certainly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We get it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Let's do that, I think we've got a motion before us, roll call please, a little bit.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Danny Klein, yes, not, no.
Yes.
Yes.
And no.
Yes. Okay, we're down to the macro associates.
Good evening, my name's Kate Molten, and I'm a macro associate, and I'm here to present the audit. For the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. And in the audit, um, pages one through three, we have the independent auditor's report. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements compared in accordance with the modified cash basis accounting. This indicates that the financial statements are fairly consistent in all material respects. In conformity with the modified cash basis of accounting. An unmodified opinion is based with the highest level of assurance that auditor can provide. It reflects our conclusion that the financial statements provide a true and fair view. In all material respects of the district's financial position and results of operation for the year. On page four, we have the statement of net position on the modified cash basis. At June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, there are total assets of ninety four million eight hundred forty six. Thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, which consists of cash investments and capital assets, including accumulated depreciation. The total liabilities are thirty three million seven hundred ninety seven thousand five hundred thirty five dollars. Which consists of payroll withholding and long term debt. The net position is sixty four thousand. I'm sorry, sixty four million forty nine thousand three hundred seventy four dollars. Which consists of twenty six million net investment capital assets. Four million of restricted net position and thirty four million of unrestricted net position. And that restricted net position, um, is detailed in the footnotes to break down between the different funds. On page five, is the statement of activities on the modified cash basis. Total expenditures are forty three million six hundred ninety thousand one hundred and ninety four. And that includes the one point eight, I'm sorry, one point eight million dollars of the on behalf payments. And the six hundred and twenty six thousand, uh, dollars of, uh, student activity fund revenue. The total, excuse me, uh, the. Total expenditures, I'm sorry, I lost my place, the, uh, forty three million. Six hundred, six hundred and nine, one hundred and ninety four is the total expenditures. Um, which again includes the on behalf payments and the, uh. Uh, student activity funds, uh, the charges for service are one million sixty four thousand two hundred eighty three dollars. The operating grants and contributions are five million. One hundred thirty four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars, and the general revenues are. Uh, thirty nine million eight hundred forty nine thousand three hundred and seventy two. Which results in a net change of position of two million four hundred thousand, four hundred thirty nine thousand one hundred seventy one. Um, overall, there, we have an increase in our. Overall net position between two years. On this statement, we are not including the capital. Uh, outlet, which is added to the capital assets, but we are including depreciation expense. Um, also the long term debt payments are not included in those expenditures. Um, on page six, it's the statement of assets, liabilities and changes in fund balance. The total assets are thirty nine million five hundred eighty two thousand one hundred ninety six. This consisted only of the cash and the investments. This does not consist of any of the fixed assets on list schedule. The total liabilities are, um, one million five hundred forty five thousand. Two hundred and eighty six thousand dollars, this consists of payroll liabilities and, um. Cash overdraft balances, basically in some of the funds where there is no cash in that fund. Uh, the deficit is posted in the liabilities. Uh, fund balance is thirty four million thirty six thousand nine hundred and ten. Um, and then the last statement I want to go over is page seven. Which is the statement of revenue received, expenditures dispersed and changes in fund balance. Total revenue is forty six million dollars, which is an increase from the prior year. Of forty four point three million dollars. Totally expenditures are fifty one point two million, which is an increase of. From the prior year of forty two point three million. This increase between the two years is largely due to an increase in, uh, the capital outlay. Uh, fund balance decreased by five million one hundred ninety four thousand two hundred twenty three. Uh, to an ending fund balance of thirty eight million, third. Thirty six thousand nine ten. Um, and on the next page, we also see a reconciliation. Between the revenues and expenditures on the statement of activities on page five. With what is on page seven, so that will show those differences in expenditures and show a reconciliation. Of how we're getting from one statement to the next. Um, other, uh, footnote that have, uh. Can make an importance to the district is the footnote on the capital assets, which is on page nineteen. This shows, um, detailed breakout of the different fixed asset lines, the additions, any dispositions. And the depreciation expense for the year, we also have a breakout of the significant projects. That make up that capital outlay expenditure that we saw on the financial statements. Uh, on page twenty, there is a breakout of all the bond and the debt issuances for the district. Um, we also include the terms of all of these bonds, the notes. So that we can see what can be amount paid for the current year, the payments for the future year, and any interest in long term debt schedules. Uh, during the audit, we did not know any, um, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and we did not have any. Uh, financial safety findings, uh, during the year, we, the district expended over the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Threshold of federal expenditures, which meant that there was a single audit required to be performed. We looked at the I D A program, and we did not have any compliance findings with the single audit. Um, as Jason noted, we had a couple of management comments that. Uh, were discussed during the audit field work, and those, um, were submitted to the board. Uh, to review, there was nothing, uh, substantial initial result during the upcoming fiscal year. So those are all the points that I wanted to bring up, and if there are any questions, I would be happy to address.
This is Donna, but the, uh, T R S on behalf payments.
Yes.
I don't, there's a stretch for years where, let's say it wasn't looking, usually been planned. This, and it was very hard to fund it, do you know if that's when the party for the states actually started appearing at this point?
I do not know to what extent that they have physically made their contributions, uh, the state of Illinois, um. Has typically been behind on those payments and not making them in full. Um, in our footnote for the T R S, there is a link to their website, and their audited financials are available on that. But, there's, what we're told that the state's doing, what the state actually does, is a little bit of a disconnect, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, well, I would just like to thank, uh, the district and the staff for all of the help with, uh, putting the audits together. And giving us the opportunity to work with you, we really appreciate. Um, all of the work and cooperation that went into helping us with the audit and getting everything done, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny, so are my work relationships, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm getting everything.
You too. There's no free door too.
Well, thank you.
All right, Matt, does that bring back memories?
A little bit.
Okay, I guess we're ready to go to new business then. I will entertain a first and second wish to accept the five hundred dollar grant from the Illinois Teachers Retirement Foundation as presented. City so moves and Mindy seconds.
Spencer, you want to comment about? Just quickly, um, Ms. Brenna Austin, her second year English teacher at the middle school, I for this, uh, middle school ELA grant. And got approved, and she's going to use that money to purchase novels, uh, with a variety of genres and. Uh, reading levels, the wealth interest of the kids, so she's, uh, she's very excited about that, and she'll be making those purchases here soon.
Okay, questions? Well, thank her for that, thank, uh, for that, I wouldn't want to tell her, roll call please, a little bit.
Danny Klein, yes, Danny Rampon, yes, Danny Hart, yes, Matt Melvin, yes, Ryan Van Dan, yes, Ken Melvin.
Yes. Anything we need to worry about, guys, going on over there?
No, there's a problem with a, uh, uh, rooftop unit's duct detector. And so Mr. Wood Kaiser's over there, uh, in the rain on the ladder climbing up there, and fire department always loves to bring the trucks, so.
All right.
All good.
Okay, Spencer, we want to talk about the I S B E or Gemma's talk.
Yeah, we're going to turn around and suspend you, so you can.
I'm gonna throw some more numbers at you, you've been, you had enough today.
As she's, as she's setting up there, just a couple of things with that, um, you may have heard that I S B E had. Um, looked at these testing, test scores, and they adjusted them a little bit, and she's going to do a lot better job explaining why and how. Um, Mrs. Kenny spends a week, is that correct, a week down in Springfield, working on this with the, with the state. Um, got a lot of connections that way, and, and I think she was very, very glad to be allowed that opportunity. Uh, and we are too, with some connections that we've now gained with the, so, but, uh, her being involved, that was really. Uh, she, she was a vital part of this process, I'm sure she'll talk about that, but she's going to go over that a little bit with you, the process and, and why. Because I think there's some misconceptions there, right?
Well, before we start, I'll just say, um, it was great to spend a week down there doing this, because at first when I heard that they were going to lower cut scores. It just kind of threw me off a little bit, like, okay, we're going to be dumbing down the test, what are we doing in Illinois, it's, it's not.
Share your slides with me.
But the process was great, um, I was fortunate to work with sixth, seventh and eighth grade math coming up with those cut scores. So we spent a lot of time looking at tests, looking at the, um, common core standards. And what it means to be proficient. Got it. So I'm going to just kind of go through the process, um. Why the state decided to do this, give you a couple of examples, and then I'm going to give you the cut scores real quick. Unfortunately, I can't share any of the data yet from our testing yet, because we're still in the moratorium until, um. Believe it's that mid, end of October, um, so when you do see new scores. They're going to look fantastic, because we have any cut scores, um, but it's more in line with what our students are actually able to do. Um, so what we called it is bright sizing the proficiency standard, so instead of lowering them, what we did is we looked at. What our tests were, we looked at what the proficiency cut scores were, and then we went from there and had great discussions on. How that applies to students, because what a cut score really is, is, is a student on track, are they where they're supposed to be? And when you get to high school, the scores for the A C T S A T are basically what. Their chances are of getting a C or higher in a college level course. Um, so who does it affect, it affects kids, of course, because they always get that score home, and it's like, oh, we're needs improvement. Or below standards, things like that, so they, that's really going to affect a lot of our, our students. It goes on our school report card, so it's going to change school report cards across the board and what those look like. They are redesigning the school report card for next year, so. We, we will see all of these cut score changes, and then next year we'll see them revising the, uh, state report card again. And taking several things out, actually, it's going to be based more on proficiency scores and student growth. Um, it also has to do with our accountability designations that we have at each building. And then we also have the accelerated placement act, which was put into place a couple of years ago. This is really going to affect this for our, our district, because with the accelerated placement act, any student that's proficient or higher is automatically placed in the next most rigorous course. So if you look at some of our freshman A P courses, uh, our freshman, um, human geography course. Any student that scored proficient or higher in E L A is automatically placed in that class, so we're looking at. Eighty to ninety percent of our students are automatically placed in an A P class, so that, that's going to have some implications for us that we'll have to really. Um, look at and consider. Here's a few things that drove this, you have U S News and World Report, we're fourth in the nation, believe it or not, Illinois is, which. Wouldn't have known that, right? Um, CNBC gives us an A, we're third in the nation for education according to CNBC. Um, if you look down at N A P, N A P is a test, it's the, uh, national assessment of educational process, progress, and that's throughout the entire nation. They actually rank us, um, we're ranked above the national average in eighth grade reading and math. And then from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, we've pretty much held steady across all of our subjects. And then college board, which is our A P and S A T platform, um, they ranked us, uh, Illinois among the top five states. In A P metrics, so. In AP metrics, so. We we sound really good, right, but our test scores on IER and ACT didn't look so good, so. It has some real consequences of us not giving students a real score of where they really are. So I have a couple of examples of some students. This is in Naperville North, these are actual students, they're not made up, this is a Naperville North student, um, she had a three point nine GPA, seven AP courses. Industry certifications, she's involved, she's not proficient either, ELA or math. Another student, uh, dual credit courses, working year round, multiple activities. Three point seven five, which is a high A average, still not proficient in either of those with those scores. And then you have a straight A student in East St. Louis with six dual credit, um, a ton of activities and work based, and she's not. Proficient according to the state either, so you can kind of see there's some students that really stand out, and when we look at our students too. You can kind of handpick those students where you know that they are proficient, but. The state says they're not, um, those students before, you can see ones at University of Missouri, ones at John Wood Community College, and one is at Southwestern. Illinois College, and they're all doing fantastic. So our old performance levels, and this is where it gets kind of fun funny, because we didn't really realize this until I put the ran the numbers through, but. ELA and math were too high, by far, they didn't match anything, and actually, science was too low. So they upped the cut scores on the science, which had some impact on us as well. Um, the one thing we did know when we were looking at scores, our science scores for um third through eighth grade were extremely high. And then we got to the ACT, and they were much lower, so there's some discrepancies there between um those scores. So this is the basis for it all, because every state you go to has four different categories in where students are gonna be placed, four different buckets. But if you look at that top bar, that is what we currently were using, we were using a do does not meet, partially meets, approaching, meets. Exceeds, and then ISA is our science test, and then SAT is our high school test. So there's no consistency with how things were scored, we've got five categories, four categories, and they're all different names, so. The ultimate um goal is to bring all scores to this, which makes sense, we want to look at scores and be able to identify. Where they're at, third grade, eighth grade, freshman year, and so on. So part of the cha- the challenge was is to really find the ACT scores. Um, because before, actually, the Ill- Illinois SAT benchmarks were higher than the the actual AP. Or I'm sorry, College Board, so I'm just gonna throw out a number, I'm totally making up these numbers, but. College Board was at twenty three, Illinois was at twenty five, doesn't make any sense, so they went through, we're looking at. Some different um colleges, and you need an eighteen in language arts to go into English Comp one at Eastern. And nineteen to get a scholarship at Harper College, twenty three to get um to not have to take the writing test at Loyola. So those are some things that they considered when they were looking at those ACT scores. In math, you can see seventeen, twenty, twenty two for a scholarship at Loyola. Um, you need a twenty six or a twenty seven to get into calculus. So those are some scores, they took that into consideration, they went through and looked through the task. And then here are those scores that I was talking about before, if you look at score of eighteen, these are the probabilities according to um. ACT, which is Pearson, and what that would look like when they get to college, so you're looking at seventy one percent of kids, if they score an eighteen, will have a C or higher. Be successful in college. So here, which is in my report, are the new benchmark scores. You can see a lot of, um, they fell most from third grade from seven fifty to seven thirty five, but then you can see they consistently go up as you go through. Um, and then you'll notice over here, your science scores went from a seven ninety nine to an eight twelve. The nice thing about it is though, is we are getting the same score, so if you scored would be the same, so we're still able to look at a student's growth. And not necessarily just look at their proficiency or not, so we've already done that. And pulled those numbers to look at their growth, to see where they fall, and that will be part of the state's um accountability too, will be that growth that'll continue on. So we're gonna have one year where scores look different, and then we'll be able to move on from there, but we're still able to track a kid, we're not changing. Anything to do with how it's the test is scored or what sort score they receive. These are the new cut scores for ACT. They might look a little low in ninth grade at eleven fifteen eleven, but it goes up to thirty two, so um. You don't get up to thirty six until you actually take the ACT. But you can see they get much higher once you get to the above proficient, and those are the students that they think, um. And the fourteen fifteen eighteen, those students will be a C or higher in college according to the statistics behind it. Like I said before, we're still gonna have that student growth percentile, and that's gonna allow us to look at students from third grade to fourth grade. Fifth grade to sixth grade, because I think that's more indicative of a successful student and successful programs if they're growing. If they're not growing, then we have a problem, proficiency score is a proficiency score, but the growth is what we really wanna concentrate on and look at. Right, I will be rolling out all of those changes with those cut scores once we can, um. But it it was a great process, and I really think this will be beneficial to our students to look at it a different way. And make sure that they understand that they can be successful in that label. We've improved it. Any questions for me?
I would just say thanks, Jim, for your for going through that, um, yeah, that student growth is what we really need to take a look at. Well, that's 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 extremely important, if they're if they're growing, going along, and we're in good shape, but when we stop, when they stop going, that's when we got problems. So we've got to look, so yeah, I'd be really curious to see that.
And with the new accountability, it will mainly be student growth and proficiency, they're taking out a lot of the um. Attendance or attendance, they're taking out fine arts indicator, they're taking out a bunch of the indicators, so it's gonna be just. High school graduation rates and then the proficiency and growth.
Any questions, Jim? Well, yeah, thank you for doing that, I hope that was meaningful for you. Okay, thanks, Jim.
No, just like I said before, just happy that we were choosing to participate, and since then, participated in another form of virtual.
Yeah.
Training or activity, but.
It was a data review, so I I get to sit through um. Actual questions that will be on the IER test, and um we looked at the statistics and. How students did on it and decided whether it was a good question, whether it needed to be edited or thrown out, I'll narrow sixty one question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, moving along, any communication before regarding to gen items or anything in general? What do you say, they are, so I want a couple of dates, board study sessions, a whole will be the seventh theme. I remember that's that's a little bit early, so I'll make sure we have that on the calendar, and the next regular readings on October first. Okay, nothing else then, it's seven oh eight, there are here first and second motion to adjourn. Mister Cameron. And uh, Middy. First by. By Quinn, it's second by Mindy, go ahead, roll call, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both same side. And we are done.